Okay, good morning. I will call to order the March 4th regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners. Our first item of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'm going to ask our chaplain, the Reverend Patrick Womack, to come forward and give her invocation. If anyone would please stand for the pledge.
May we pray. Almighty God, we come before you this day to acknowledge you in all of our affairs, and to give you thanks for the opportunity to conduct the business of the people. We pray that you will bless these your servants to carry out their responsibilities in a manner that serves all of us. But Lord, as we conduct business here, we certainly consider those who are dealing with the devastation of the tornado in Lee County, Alabama, and the surrounding area. Please have mercy on these, oh Lord, we pray. Provide for these first responders who are giving it their all to provide recovery and rescue for those so desperately in need. Lord, grant us your protection and give us your guidance. We call out to you for wisdom, and we pray, oh Lord, your will be done. For we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Womack. We really appreciate you coming and being of service to us in this regard. Okay, our next order of business will be our public comment session. Each person has three minutes to make a comment, and I'll time that, and then when you hear the beep, if you would, just finish up your comments. And if you would, when you introduce yourselves, please state your name and maybe where you live, and if you're speaking for a group, we'll let you do five minutes. And I have one person to sign up, and if anyone would like to speak that hasn't signed up, they can, after Mr. Benhart. So I'm going to call R.E. Benhart is the first one to speak this morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Ron Benhart. My brother and I have been in the construction and development business here since the eighties. During that time, we've met a lot of people. We've moved our families here almost completely, all kids and parents at one time or another. During that time, we have come up with a list of concerns which are their concerns as far as the taxpayers of this county are concerned. The first list begins with the school board, who recently fired a shot across our bow with announcement that they're looking at a $13 million complex, either wholly or partially, to be built on the 10-acre tract that you recently authorized the purchase of next to Tuscola High School. Before anything is planned on that, we feel that the school board needs to address certain issues so we all know and can plan for what kind of expenditures are involved. List includes whether the football turf replacement will occur, when, and at what cost. The second is the future of Central Elementary School. The third is the future of Central Haywood High. Are any renovations planned? What about a gymnasium replacement? And most importantly, teacher retention, which comes down primarily to salaries. You gentlemen are faced with other county issues and a partial list, very, very short in nature, that I will mention. Employee salaries, landfill issues, the future of EMS, the requests of the Sheriff's Department, the future of the old hospital, and more importantly, a resolution for the Jonathan Creek White Elephant, which has defied all efforts to turn it into something constructive for almost 10 years. We contend that any future construction contracts that form should be in a secondary position to function. The best example of that is our new pet shelter. While desperately needed, in its current form, it is a monument to the designer, the friends of the shelter, and those who voted for it. As we understand that the county's in a good position to borrow money, and that's certainly to our advantage, but our intention is to solve the issues that I have reiterated prior to any new construction. You gentlemen are faced with a dilemma, which is common to most governmental bodies in this country, and that is, what is desirable or necessary? But more importantly, is it affordable? A pessimist would term these issues problems; an optimist would term them opportunities. We are confident that you will resolve these opportunities for the benefit of the majority of the Haywood County taxpayers and citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benhart. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this morning? Okay, if not, I'll close the public comment session, and our next item of business will be our constituent concerns. And Mark, do you have any this morning? Okay, Kurt? Brandon?
No, just a comment. I think with the recent weather that we've had and the slides that we've had in the area, I appreciate our public servants that responded to that, and as long as with the rest of the folks here in the county. Our county manager spent some time there over the weekend as well, and I think things went smoothly with all that could have happened. They got that reopened pretty quick down on 40, so I just appreciate all of the work of collaborative work of all the people involved.
I can echo what Brandon said. I had a couple of calls about some road issues. Some
of you have driven over them. 276 on Waynesville Mountain, looks like it's fixing to go over the bank. So appreciate everybody's been working on that and the DOT and everybody else. And another thing, I learned Wednesday about our Waynesville town manager suffered a tragic death and his family, so just need to continue to remember him and his family.
Okay, and then Bryant has something I'd like to report on. I don't understand all the nuances of the standard emporers, but I'll let Bryant explain it this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We found out late Friday that S&amp;P Rating Agency upgraded Haywood County from AA to AA+. And so this is great news. Shows that we're headed in the right track in the rating agency's minds. They actually cited several things. I'll go over with you. The strong economy, being in the Asheville MSA is a positive mark for us. Also, they cite strong management with good financial policies. The policies that we have in place are really appeal to the rating agencies. They let them know that we're about doing the right thing financially. Strong budgetary performance. They also mentioned very strong debt and contingency liability profile, that our debt is falling off. We aren't, you know, we don't have more debt than we can afford. We're doing a good job with that, and that we're doing some pay-as-you-go capital projects. They appreciate that. And then they cite very strong institutional framework, just meaning how things get done, the structures we have in place for good government. So I think this is a great positive mark. An upgrade like this usually means about quarter of a percent interest, and you know, that's not a whole lot on just a car, but if you were going to do $20 million over 20 years, quarter percent is a lot of interest. That ultimately saves taxpayer dollars. So I think it's a really nice thing to find out on Friday afternoon.
Yeah, that's great. That's great, Bryant. I want to give a shout out to former chairman Mark Swanger, Michael Sarles, and Bill Upton. They were part of the board. A rating like this doesn't come around because it just happens overnight, so I appreciate their leadership in providing that, as well as Julie in her office. I know she keeps us straight, and if you don't do what Julie says, you're usually going to get in trouble. So we appreciate her leadership on our financials. But yeah, that does save taxpayers money over time, so by getting lower interest rates. Okay, does anybody else have anything this morning? Okay. Our next item of business will be administrative agency reports, and at this time, we'll have our county manager introduce our new county employees.
This morning, we have several. I'll start, if you'll please stand and remain standing until everyone's announced. In Health and Human Services, Kimberly Gucero, Jessica Langston, Kimberly Gardner, Amanda Emery, and Brooklyn Johnson. In Development and Facilities, we have Amanda Lanning and Kathleen Jenkins. Some of these folks may be working evening shift. The Sheriff's Office, we have Christopher Riddle. She's probably working. Tax Collections, Tanya Bailey, and Tax Assessors, Colbert Nichols. Thank you all.
Okay. Okay, thank you all for considering to work in for Haywood County. And also, if you'd like to leave and go to work, you can do that, or if you'd like to stay, you can do that. But thank you all for wanting to work for Haywood County. Okay, our next item of business will be our Emergency Services Report on Storm Ready Certification from the National Weather Service, and we have our Assistant Emergency Services Coordinator, Cody Parton, here to talk about that.
Thank you, Chairman Easley. I appreciate it. Good morning, Commissioners. Following our mission to provide Haywood County with preparedness, incident management, and quality medical care, we're here to provide you an update. Governor Cooper, along with the State DM Director Mike Sprayberry, set forth a goal for all 100 counties to achieve the storm-ready certification through the National Weather Service. Achieving that certification also provides us credit for our EMPG funding for the emergency services as well. Back in August of last year, I brought before the board the Hazardous Weather Communications Plan, which y'all approved. It's an annex of our Emergency Operations Plan. Once the board approved the plan, with some additional work to include an inspection from the National Weather Service, they came up and done that. We come to you today to give you an update on our achievement of becoming storm-ready. Got the certificate right here. And I'd also like to introduce, this is Tricia Palmer from the National Weather Service. She's going to give you a little bit more information and some storm-ready information. I think it's a good coincidence that this just happens to also be the Weather Preparedness Week for North Carolina as well, so it just kind of coincided there. Tricia?
Thank you, Cody. Good morning, everybody. My name is Tricia Palmer. I'm a senior meteorologist at the National Weather Service in Greenville-Spartanburg. We cover 46 counties in the western Carolinas and northeast Georgia, of which Haywood County is one of them. So I am here this morning to recognize Haywood County as storm-ready as of November 20th, when I came up and did the site inspection. Just a little background on what storm-ready is. This is a national program that recognizes a community's ability to prepare for and respond to hazardous weather events. And as you all have alluded to already this morning, weather will always happen, and unfortunately, so will natural disasters. So at the county level, this is done under the leadership of the County Emergency Management Agency in partnership with us at the National Weather Service. We are very, very proud to bring Haywood County onboard as a storm-ready community, and it is my honor and my privilege to present you guys with a sign, and as Cody mentioned, we have a certificate and a letter recognizing your achievements and accomplishments. Thank you so very much for partnering with us. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions?
Where are we going to put the sign?
My hopes are, if we can, possibly get a couple more made similar to this. I'd like to post them at the entrances to Haywood County on I-40, 2374. I-40 coming in from Tennessee, just to show all of our visitors and everything like that coming into Haywood County, that we are a storm-ready certified county. And then we'll also, I don't know, we've got to have another place to put this one here. So maybe out front of our emergency services building or something like that. So it's a big achievement. I appreciate you letting me come and provide an update for you this morning.
Yeah, it'd be good to have those when you come into Haywood County. I agree with you on that. I think that's a good location for them.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next order of business under Administrative Agency Reports will be the Haywood County Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team, the annual reports. And we have HHS Social Work Division Director Gaila Jones and HHS Director of Nursing, Lisa Davis, this morning, if you would come forward.
Good morning. I am Gaila Jones, and I'm the Social Work Division Director with Health and Human Services Agency, and I'm here to present our CCPT Community Child Protection Team Annual Report for 2018. And just a little background, each county is mandated by general statute to have a community child protection team, and we review selected active cases in which children are being served by Child Protective Services and cases in which a child may have died as a result of suspected abuse or neglect. So we meet quarterly, also with CFPT, and the dates are listed in our annual report that we met in 2018. The purpose of the case reviews is to identify systemic deficiencies in child welfare services or resources. And once those are identified, then the team develops strategies to address the gaps in the child welfare system within the county, and then to report to the state areas of concern that weren't actioned by the state. So each community child protection team shall review fatalities also, and we did review in 2018, we reviewed three fatalities. And the actions and recommendations of those, we review those through an intensive child fatality team and its members of the community with different agencies and Health and Human Services. And we also have someone from the state that comes and facilitates those. So some of the recommendations of those are in the report. I'll just highlight those and if you have any questions. One was more training to be provided to social workers by the state to enhance practice in regards to temporary safety providers, and those are providers in which children are at risk. They cannot be placed with their parents, and so the parents then have an option to place them with relatives, family, friends, that sort of thing temporarily while we're involved. The Division of Health and Human Services should consider revisions in the Children's Services Manual regarding safety practice by social workers in which a family is using fossil fuel burning heat or appliance as their main heating source. And I'll just give you an example. We're mandated by the state to check smoke detectors in all homes. We are not mandated to check first CO2 detectors. So that was what we had presented to the state, is that they may want to look at that for us to do that. Also, that this Division of Health and Human Services should consider revisions to Chapter 8 in the manual regarding best practice for employees, their well-being, to include handling of critical incidents such as death or significant traumatic event. So when we encounter something traumatic, we need to take care of our social workers too, so we ask them to look into that. Also, stronger collaboration between Health and Human Services and local mental health providers in order to support the needs of clients that we serve in Haywood County. So we also review active Child Protective Services cases during these meetings, and there's just a few recommendations that we came with throughout the year. One was collaboration with our Care Coordination for Children, which is on the health services side, to ensure that families are benefiting from those services. Also, the continuing need in Haywood County for substance abuse services for clients. Also, individual counseling and mental health services are always going to be needed. And also identify the need for Spanish-speaking substance abuse services in Haywood County, as well as parenting classes for that population. And then the last page of the report is just the members of our Community Child Protection Team. Are there any questions?
I saw you had one death in 2017. It was undetermined, and then 2018, you had one.
Yes. Yes, and what Lisa will talk about is the fatalities. We had, the three that we had were in 2016, and if we've had a Child Protective Services open on a child that passes within 12 months after that, then the state looks at those cases to review. So hers may be different than my cases.
How do we stack up with counties our size in relation to these deaths?
I don't think we're off by any means. I mean, if you look at Buncombe, you know, of course, they're going to have a significant amount, and of course, we don't want any. But I don't think we're an outlier or anything like that as far as the deaths, unfortunately.
One other thing I've noticed in your report, the train for like fossil fuel homes that use fossil fuels, is that for the worker's safety or for the children's safety?
Really both. It can be both. You know, when we're looking at smoke detectors, it's hopefully to prevent, you know, a fatality within a house fire. But we've also learned that many families in Haywood County heat this way, and so it's very important to have those CO2 detectors in there. However, the state doesn't mandate us to do those. Best practice, we would ask our social workers to look at that, but it's not mandated by policy at this point in time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is this, let's see, I'm sorry. So you've asked the state to look at the CO2 detectors?
We have, and at least look at that to incorporate into policy. So not just Haywood County looks at that, but across the state, social workers are looking at that when they're heating with that source.
Okay, especially like kerosene heaters, I would think that would be a...
Absolutely. And you'd be surprised, most people that heat like that probably don't think about having those detectors. So just making that awareness and having that social worker talk to the family, I think would be important.
Gaila, if you don't mind, just touch on the pack and plays. I know that was something that really was big when I first seen that. I think to Patrick, if I remember correctly, there was a bunch more just donated as well. But if you don't mind, just speak, so these guys will know.
Absolutely. We know unfortunately that some of the fatalities are, we can look at and see contributing factors, and co-sleeping is a major factor. So Patrick Johnson, Health Director, has reached out to the community to ask about pack and plays being donated. Rotary, I think, just donated. We've got about 100 at this point in time. So we can give those out to families. Anybody within our services can give those out to families, because you would be surprised. Families come home and they have a car seat. They may not have a crib, and those types of things. So we're able to give those out to say, here, educate on co-sleeping, and say, here's a pack and play, you know, put your infant in there for the time being, and let's try to prevent some of the co-sleeping. So Patrick has done a great job as far as advocating for that, and we've got, I'd say, over 100 pack and plays to give out to the community.
I just thought that would be good for you guys to hear, and those in the audience who are watching on TV as well. If you need one, they are free.
Absolutely. You could come to anyone with Health and Human Services Agency and discuss that, and we can get you one. Thank you.
In follow-up to Gaila's report, I'm Lisa Davis. I'm the Director of Nursing with Public Health, and I am the Chair of our county's Child Fatality Prevention Team. Gaila's team with Community Child and then Child Fatality Prevention Team work very closely together in trying to work to prevent deaths in children. And so CFPT is actually mandated by state law for every county to have a team. We have had a team in place since 1995, and I'm proud to say that we have a very active membership. They are wonderful members with a heart for children and add many contributions to our efforts. And again, what we do is, unfortunately, after a child dies, from birth to the age of 18, we assess the records of those deaths to determine if there were any deficiencies or were causes, any systems that might have been in place that could have prevented it. And usually, the review process takes about a year, because it takes us that long to get information to do that. We meet four times a year or quarterly. In 2017, we had one death, and the cause was undetermined. In 2018, we had one death that was caused by suicide. And so what we do is, we find, based on the circumstances of the death, possible contributing factors. And some of those have been made, as Gaila said, that were related to co-sleeping or bed sharing. And so what we've done, when we make our recommendations, it's either locally as a team that we choose to put actions in place, or projects, or programs, or we make recommendations to the state CFPT Coordinator. So what we've done is, we continue to support safe sleep initiatives, activities, and recommendations. We provide safe sleep information and education to parents and caregivers. We provide the pack and plays that we have available. And then also, we have made notification to the General Assembly about our concern about the number or the trend of infant deaths in the past five years due to unsafe sleeping conditions. And actually, in the past five years, we have had eight infant deaths that had unsafe sleeping conditions as possible contributing factors. So this is something that is very important to us to try to prevent in the future. We also are supportive of initiatives, activities, and programs that address maternal substance use during the pregnancy. When we don't have a death to review, then our team is active about getting trainings, and so we had a presentation regarding the federal policy on Child Abuse Prevention and Treatment Act, or CAFTA, and the Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act of 2016, CARA, which addresses the needs of substance-affected infants, its implementation in our county, and how it affects our screenings and referrals. We also had a presentation regarding teen suicide prevention, and then we also had a webinar for the Guidelines for Riding Effective System Problems: Recommendations and Actions for our team. Do you have any... Oh, I'm sorry. I just meant to add that, like Gaila's report, we have a list of our current membership.
Anybody have any questions? On the eight, you said there were eight sleep deaths, I guess?
Over the past five years, we have had eight that may have had co-sleeping as contributing factors. They were not listed, or co-sleeping was not listed as the cause of death, but they were circumstances that were present surrounding the infant's death.
Is that in Haywood County or the state, really?
Yes. That's in Haywood County.
I guess I'm assuming when you say co-sleeping, just for the viewers, that means that an adult and the child are sleeping in the same bed, and maybe the child rolls over and can't breathe, or the adult causes in some fashion, not intentionally, for them to stop breathing?
Yes. Co-sleeping is exactly as you described. It just means that the infant was not sleeping alone, which is what the recommendations are by the American Academy of Pediatrics, is for an infant to have their own safe place to sleep. But also factored in with that are unsafe sleeping conditions, which means that the infant could be in their own place to sleep, but there may be cushions, or pillows, or wedgies, or stuffed animals, or anything, blankets that may have gotten, you know, in place to where the child was not able to breathe. And so we have to look at those and really try to promote education, and we do that a lot through our Care Coordination Programs, through Public Health, when we're talking with parents, giving out information when we give out these pack and plays, you know, to just encourage it as much as possible.
I could see how that would happen, because as a parent, you get up during the night, and then you just maybe are consoling the child, and then you fall asleep, and it just, I could see how that would happen. I could see how that would happen just anyway.
It's just unfortunate, accidental deaths for sure and preventable, so.
Any other questions this morning?
Thank you so much for your time and support.
Thank y'all. Appreciate all y'all doing. Okay, that's, that ends our administrative agency reports. Our next order of business is the discussion or adjustment to the agenda. I have none, does anyone have any? Okay, hearing none, I will move to consent agenda. Uh, the first order is the request approval of the February 18th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any additions, corrections or changes to those?
No, sir.
The what?
Said no, sir.
Oh. Okay, and our second item of the consent agenda is the request approval of a government entity certificate of resolution for TD Bank in order to put money into a certificate of deposit, or I guess that would be called a CD. We have our Finance Director Julie Davis.
Good morning. Yes, all, all we have here is this resolution that needs to be approved by the board in order for the county manager and me to be signers and open this certificate of deposit. We're going to be getting, um, a pretty decent interest rate, 2.45%, which is, um, good compared to some of the .9 and the .2 that we've had over the past few years.
Any questions on that? Okay, the next item will be request approval of, uh, the, of, from a, an expenditure from the General Fund, Public Safety, the Sheriff's Office. It'll be $40,000 to cover vehicle repairs and maintenance through the rest of the physical year to pay, to be paid from contingency in the General Fund.
That's exactly right. The vehicles in the Sheriff's Office are aging and they've had, um, numerous repairs this year, so we're hoping that this $40,000 will get them through June 30th and, um, so that when they can, um, get through, so they can get their new vehicles in the next budget year.
Anyone have any questions on that? Okay, the next item will be from the General Fund will be HHSADSS Work First for $5,161 for the rope transportation funding for the Work First program.
All right, and this is $5,161. Rope is the Rural Operating Assistance Program and that's, uh, for people to have a little money to help them to get to work. The, what we're doing here is we're just matching the amount of revenue we're going to receive to what the state's told us and then having our, our expense the same.
Okay. Okay, and then the final item of the consent agenda will be HHSADSS Mental Health, Maternal and Child Health for $20,757,000. The Mini Grant for the Maternal and Child Health Program, including supporting reproductive life planning.
Yes, and this is the Public Health Section of the Health and Human Services Agency and it's just what you said, it, um, is going to be for staff training and program equipment and those types of things for the Health Department.
Does anyone have any, any questions on the consent agenda?
Is that, Julie, is that money on the, uh, Work First Initiative, is that extra to the, uh, Haywood Public Transit? Is that a separate entity to get people to and from work?
It's, it's separate from Haywood Public Transit, it is, although that program also sends money to mountain projects for, um, for getting, getting people out and about, not necessarily for work. The Work First program is to allow enough money for people to be able to go to work or to take, um, get to job interviews and that kind of thing. But all of it's from the Department of Transportation, the same as the mountain projects, public transit, uh, money.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So I moved. Second?
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, our next, uh, order of business will be old business and it'll be the request approval of upset bid and offer to purchase resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property, which is parcel number 7699-65-7779. We have our county manager, Brian Moorehead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the parcel of Lot 102 in Catalucci Mountain Estates. We brought, uh, this to you at the 20th, January 22nd meeting. Uh, we received an initial purchase offer of a thousand dollars on January 10th. We brought it to you guys on the 22nd, published it on January 25th. Uh, it went back and forth, uh, I think three times, uh, two times actually. So we had two different bidders, uh, bid on the property. It closed, um, at $1,800. Uh, we also will recoup about $344.64 in legal advertising. So I, I think we've talked about this at length. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions for Brian? This is one of several that we had, uh, coast to coast was the, uh, bidder to start these ball rolling. This is up at Catalucci Mountain Estates, which to be honest with you, I thought would be one of the better tracks of those tracks. And so we've already, uh, I guess there wasn't a lot of interest.
Doesn't seem to be a whole lot of interest. We do have, I think, five other parcels that are still in the upset bid process, um, but, but just not as much interest as we, we hoped on this one.
I told several people about that, Brian, I was trying to help you out, trying to help the county.
Get the, get the word out on the others, please.
Get the word out, get people bidding.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, is there any other discussion on this? Okay. Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion to approve the offer to purchase the, and the resolution and execution of a non-warranty deed to the successful bidder of county-owned property. And that successful bidder was, I think, Coast to Coast was the name of the...
That's correct. The, the, the initial bidder is the, the successful bidder.
Okay. Okay, and I'll entertain that motion at this time.
So I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? And the name of the group was Coast to Coast Group LLC. Okay, all those in favor?
I got a question. There's no way to recoup the 42 that we spent to take the property?
Oh, that's, you know, that's the issue.
Not any way to legally get it?
No, no, sir. Unless you reject the bid and we offer for sale, but we've had it on our website for years, so.
Yeah, I understand that, that part to it.
This brings about the dilemma sometimes on whether we should actually take the properties. I mean, sometimes it's not necessarily worth it to take the properties when you, when you take it, you're going to sell it for less than what you got in it. Or use the efforts to go about taking it. And sometimes that supports the fact that leasing, leaving the property on the tax books for a while to await payment or wait sale by the owner, so you don't expend attorney's fees and costs in order to get the property and then therefore sell it and then lose money. So it's kind of one of the things, you just have to be a good tax collector and make decisions properly. If you're still in office 16 years from now, when some of these started, we'll have this discussion again. It's a tough situation because some of these properties are just, people get them and they find out later they're just not worth it.
Do we have any idea what it yields if they don't develop it? I'm assuming that's what they're going to do is put a house or something on it. Do we have any idea what it yields a year as far as taxes are concerned if we put it back in the tax rolls?
Definitely be better than what we got now.
Well, it is, but the economy's on the improve.
That's true.
So there's always a possibility you could, could get back to that point. It's just really hard to take a loss on something.
I understand. I don't like taking losses neither.
I've had to take some losses before. If you buy and sell real estate, then, yeah. Uh, I, I will say, this, this parcel was, was, was buildable and it's in Catalucci Mountain Estates, which is up near the ski lodge. And, uh, I would hope that, and this group is a construction company, I think, um, so I would hope they would build a house and hopefully, uh, and then that would definitely, uh, once the house is built on it, then you're looking at the house plus the land, uh, for, uh, to tax revenue. And whereas now, and, and they're going to be paying tax, they won't pay taxes on what they paid for it, they'll be paying taxes on what the, um, tax value is. And because this can't be considered, since it's a distressed sale, you can't consider that as fair market value. So it'll be paid, I, I don't know what the tax value is, but it's probably in here, but...
It's, uh, 45,700.
45,000, okay. So that's going to be about $250 a year, I guess, something like that. Somewhere in that neighborhood. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussions? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay. Okay, our next order of business will be new business and the first item is to request approval of a resolution supporting the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council allocation expansion of the 30th Judicial, let's see, we have our 30th District Administrator JCPC Chair Brad Reniger this morning. Good morning.
Luckily, I'm not here asking you for money. I'm asking you to ask for money. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Councils oversee the allocation of state funding, um, that is designed to address recidivism and juvenile delinquency. Uh, this past year, uh, the state legislature enacted Raise the Age. So, um, any crime that would be committed, um, now for somebody who's under the age of 18 is going to be considered a juvenile. In North Carolina beforehand, it was 16. There's going to be an influx of new juvenile cases. This resolution is to ask North Carolina Legislature to fully fund the Juvenile Crime Prevention Councils. The state has not, uh, increased funding for juvenile crime prevention councils in over 10 years and truly the programs that we fund at this point, they're just choking. You know, if, uh, I hadn't had a raise in the past 10 years, I'd be struggling a little bit. These programs are going through quite a bit the same thing. Do you have any questions of me at this time?
When, when did they change the age of, to 18 from 16? I, I missed that.
So, okay, that, this past legislature, um, in North, North Carolina, it was one of the only, I think there was maybe two states in the entire, uh, United States that the juvenile age was 16. And so they've been going through this process for years. Last year was when they, um, upped it. It will not go into effect until this coming December, um, however. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I can understand where you get two more years under that category, you're going to be, you're going to get...
There's going to be, I, I don't know that it's going to be a huge influx and they've, the way they've, uh, managed the law, there's still going to be quite a few of these kids that if it's a serious crime, they'll still be treated as an adult. But say Johnny and Billy get into a fight in the lunchroom at Tuscola, uh, they can still be charged as juveniles, um, as opposed to being brought into adult court and having an adult record. But there will be an influx.
Brad, uh, just to reiterate, I know the funding for you guys has not changed in how long?
10 years.
I, I just wanted to make that clear. It's been 10 years since you got any extra funding and everybody knows the cost of going up for everything, so.
Right.
I was part of this, this board, so, uh, that's one thing I wanted to point out. Uh, Mark is the new Commissioner on that board, but, uh, funding hasn't changed, so this is something we probably need to reach out and get more funding because we know now with the age changing, it's definitely going to require more money, so.
Definitely. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
I mean, let's see. We, we need to vote on that, right? Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, I will entertain a motion to request approval of a resolution supporting the JCPC allocation expansion.
So I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor, uh, expressed by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, all those, any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, next item of business number two was the present, is a presentation from Goodwill Industries and a request approval of county manager to execute a contract for an attended donation center trailer placed on county property. And we have, uh, our Development Facility Service Director Chris Boyd and Goodwill Industry Representative Richard Hensley. Welcome.
Good morning, good morning, sir. Thank you for allowing this presentation. Haywood County was approached by, uh, Mr. Hensley and a gentleman, Dustin Tate, that's also with Goodwill. A while back to look at some locations about potentially placing the attended Goodwill, uh, trailers. We spent some time looking at various, um, locations and, and maybe have narrowed that down to two or three at this point. We'd like to, uh, have you approve the resolution, allowing the county manager to execute that contract once we determine exactly where and the parameters of such. But in the meantime, I'd like to introduce Richard Hensley to, uh, provide a short PowerPoint presentation about Goodwill and what they do for the community.
First, thank you for allowing me to come here and talk to you for a few minutes today. I'll try not to take up too much of your time. We've been, I've been with Goodwill myself for about nine years. My name's Richard Hensley. What we are doing in that community over, what I do is I'm over the, uh, donated trailers that you see around. There's one up here in the Kmart parking lot, which we employ a couple of people up there. And we take the donations, which in turn fund our programs, uh, through the stores where they, you know, the retail stores where they sell the product, which funds our job training programs and, and helping people find jobs in the community. We have a, uh, Waynesville office up here, which employs three or four people and, uh, they, they've served hundreds of people up there this year, uh, in helping them either find employment or to gain additional training so they can move up in the positions that they have. But, um, what you're looking at up here, we'll have to figure this thing out. This is it. I'm not sure which button here to push here. All right, first our mission, we, um, a lot of big words, right? We create opportunities for people to enhance their lives through training, workforce development, cooperation with other community organizations such as yourselves. So it's basically that, um, we try to get, we help people find jobs. Whether we help those people find jobs, uh, and move up in their own organization or if they're, or if they're unemployed, uh, and we help them move up. We've, we've got veteran assistance programs, uh, we are certified and the, one of the big things, we are, we are one of the, uh, Goodwills and, uh, the Goodwills is a global brand, it's a global recognized brand. But each area, each section of the country, and we serve 42 counties here in Northwest North Carolina, uh, is its own individual entity. The other Goodwills in this nation and in the world come to our facilities to look and see what we're doing right because we put 91 cents of every dollar we get back into the community, back into those training programs, which is far above what the norm is for the, uh, nonprofit centers. We have over 200 classes or programs available to anyone in the community at either no cost or a very low cost. Some, some of the certifications might have to be paid for and there's even help with that. We have 44 locations that we have served with attended donation centers, including one here, and I'd like to expand that, uh, to be two or three here because I think Haywood County could certainly support it. We have also the Goodwill store and, uh, multiple people and each, each one of those attended donation centers would employ two people full-time. Uh, last year in the Ashville District, we had over 1,500 people. We helped, uh, which includes, uh, Haywood County, uh, that we helped find jobs in almost 10,000, uh, people that we have helped, uh, use our facilities and programs. We're open, just for this, we are open seven days a week out here at these, these facilities. We're open 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, except on Sundays, we do open a little late on Sundays, we open at 12:00. Uh, we're only closed three days a year. We close Thanksgiving Day, Christmas Day and Easter. Sometimes we might close a little early on a given, you know, like Christmas Eve or something like that. And as I said, we open two full-time attendants and with full benefits, which is they have a, uh, access to, uh, health insurance. It's a great, also, uh, a job for people, retirees who are looking for some additional income. It's a great, also, a job for people, retirees, who are looking for some additional income, but don't want to commit to a, you know, because we work, a lot of times we can work with somebody and work a reduced amount of hours to help them stay below that threshold that they would require for like social security income. Pay is very, very cost competitive with other positions that we have. We offer ten dollars an hour, well above the minimum wage, full benefits. One of the things that we do offer, it's not really, it's so much of a 401K, that's a little bit of a missed thing on here, but it's an actual retirement package. So every year, it's not matched by the employee, we put ten percent of what that employee's salary was that year into a retirement program. So they made ten thousand dollars, we're putting a thousand dollars in there, and that becomes fully vested after only six years. They don't contribute to that at all. So anybody that's in that program, that is something that's automatically part of it. It's one of the good selling, of course, we offer medical, dental, and vision, two weeks off per year typically, what that four hours comes up, and as well as a tuition reimbursement. And that's one thing I'd really like to see more people take advantage of, it's underused in our organization. But we have two-thousand dollars per semester available for somebody who wants to take classes, including they can also welcome to take classes and programs through our organization as well. The, one of the places that we're looking at is the Annex Building, there's a, would like to be able to place one of our short trailers, we call them pup trailers, that are twenty-eight feet long, at that facility to help serve the community. And we would, like I said, we typically, I don't know if you've seen that, but when you're looking at one of these sites, there's a trailer that's parked there, that trailer fills up, that cycles through it, we take that trailer then to one of our stores to be downloaded while we put another trailer out there, there's some steps on there, and there's, like I said, one person there full-time during those operating hours, as well as regular visits by their supervisor, and if we, if they require some assistance, we have somebody else out there whenever they need it. This is where, if you're looking at the pictures, kind of where we would be looking at, and this would be off to the left of the building here. This is at the Senior Resource Building. This is kind of what a trailer would look like as we pack this thing up. We do understand that things change. This, one of the things we're looking at now is the Kmart out there is probably, is in the process, I believe, of closing or shutting down, as most Kmart seem to be. When business changes hands like this, a lot of times a new owner will come in or the property, you know, then they may request us to leave, they may not, I don't know. But what we would like to do is kind of partner with the county in this and move the, from where we're at now, up into the other piece of property that, and kind of stay there. And one of the things I'd like to talk about, it was a little shocking to me hearing that there was, you know, the fatalities with the infants earlier. We get a lot of times some donations in here of cribs or those, the playpens and such. We're not allowed to resell those, those are things that we're not allowed to resell. And so a lot of times we redirect those people to a local church or something to kind of to get that. And that's something, if anybody is interested, and we can do that immediately, is set aside those properties as they come in. A lot of them are in excellent condition, just, you know, the law prevents us from happening to be able to resell them. And we would be very happy to give those to anybody that would require them, whether it's a local facility or a church, or any recommendations on that. Once approved, we post the jobs online, we go through the interview process, they are, go through the screening, drug and background check, we place them into an orientation, which is a two-day classroom setting, which they're in, and they learn about Goodwill and what Goodwill does and what Goodwill offers. Then they come out to the job, and it takes two days of on-the-job training, but it's not a difficult job. You know, it's not a difficult job to learn. Sometimes it may be a little difficult to keep up in, because you are in the weather, you're in the heat of the summer and the snow in the sleet of the winter. Of course, inclement weather procedures are in place, so if something is, the weather's too bad, a lot of times we'll close the place up rather than put somebody's safety at jeopardy. Takes about two to four weeks once we place a position out there available for us to be able to fill that position. A lot of times we do that internally through our own organization. We make sure that we keep the areas clean, neat, and organized. Any donations that come in overnight will be addressed as soon as the attendant gets there. Any larger heavy items that can't, will be picked up. We have a crew that comes around and just takes care of those sorts of things, as well as if something just requires two people, a lot of times the supervisor will come out and we'll get that thing put up and keep kept away. We do police the area, we do a very broad sweep of that area, making sure there's no trash or debris that's on the ground. It's not something we ask of any of our, the property managers or anybody like that to take care of it, we'll do it ourselves. We try to be very conscientious tenants, if you will. This time I'd like to, if you have any questions or...
Yeah, I've got one. So the only location you have is the one at Kmart in Haywood County right now, is that correct?
For the donation centers, yes it is. Now, we do have the Career Connection Center up, you know, the street here, it's one of the places that we help people look for and find employment in the area.
Down in the Canton Plaza, they still drop off behind there?
What's that?
The Canton Plaza?
Chemical?
The Canton Plaza. Is that you down there as well?
Yes, it is, yep.
So you still allow them to drop off there, or is that going to replace that?
No, we'd still allow the drop off there, so. It's not, we don't intend on actually replacing. Now, the one at the Kmart is the one that we're looking, that we're looking at moving away from there, but that's not something we're in any kind of rush to do. We can certainly allow this process to take place, and we'd want to post notifications for people in the community that we are getting ready to move, that this is going to happen so they have time to get used to it, and then when we move, it'll be a fairly smooth transition.
So you're just looking for one spot to put that one in?
I would like to, what I would like is to move that one up to one spot and open an additional one, maybe two. Like I said, I'm very confident that Haywood County can support two of those donation centers.
What all kinds of donations do you accept, just so everyone knows?
I'm not in the process of turning anything away. Typically, what we don't want to take is like a box TV or something like that, that just costs money. But if somebody comes out and they're making a donation, they've made the effort to come out to make that donation, and I don't want to get in the habit of the attendants turning away primarily. Probably seventy-five percent of all donations we receive are clothing. So most of the time when you go to one of our stores to shop, what you're seeing in there is mostly clothing and shoes and softwood kind of stuff. But we do take electronics and sell those. At these particular sites, these trailers, a lot of times they can't take some very large items, they can take a couch or sofa, if it's something that they can pick up, you know, the two people can put into a site. What they may, what they would not be able to take is something like a washer and dryer or, you know, something that'd be a little bit too heavy for them to get up in there by themselves. But electronics, books, clothing, shoes, clothing is our bread and butter, you know, that's where we really make the money and be able to support the programs that we have.
How did the senior center, we're, I don't recognize most of this picture, where are you talking about, Chris, that you had approved to put it at the senior center?
Chris can probably answer that, yeah.
There's an area just to the left of the main entrance, off to the side of the auxiliary entrance, where we had some waste containers when we were building the new Moonee Cove site. So outside of the road area, we'd gravel and created some gravel areas for those waste containers. It's certainly possible to locate one of their small units there on the auxiliary entrance.
Do you think that'll interfere with early voting? Because I know that's when the senior center is used most heavily, is during that time, and I was out there for a fair piece of that, and it's a lot of people.
I don't really think so, because it's the secondary entrance. Are you familiar with where I'm talking about? You know, if you go on the main entrance...
Is it on the backside where the election board is? Is that what you're talking about, on that lower side over there?
To the left, back around the, it's a secondary, and it's not used very much. So we, you know, we didn't interfere with anything when we had the convenience center there for about nine months, but seemed, business seemed to operate fine.
Okay.
So it's really totally away from early voting. Early voting's in the Senior Resource Building at the back end, this is actually on the other side of the property. So I really don't think it will.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really kind of out of the way, but it's real visible, because it's, you can see, you know, it's right there on the edge, at the edge of the road, so you want to move the Kmart to there, and then to Annex Two across from the old hospital, you'll put a new one there, which is kind of, I guess you'd be creating a job or two there, so...
Yeah, there'd be a couple of jobs out there.
Couple of jobs, yeah, so it's kind of...
That's what we're all about, right? So we're looking very much, we're looking very forward to partnering with Haywood County on this, and maybe at some point in the future, we could even open a third location depending on how traffic is, so...
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, here and then, I'll request approval of, for the county manager to execute a contract for an attended donation center trailer placed on county property at these two locations. Okay, so can I have a motion to that?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor designate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
And good luck to y'all, yeah. Okay, our next item of new business will be to request approval of a resolution supporting a petition by landowners to add Spice Wood Drive to the North Carolina DOT system. We have our facilities, Development Facilities Director Chris Boyd. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The landowners at the end of Spice Wood Drive submitted a petition to NC DOT. I think there's three businesses there, Dr. Steele, Dr. Mina, and Aaron Crawford's facility. The section they've requested be added to the state maintenance system is about four-hundred feet long. That section of road was in pretty poor condition. The property owners upgraded, did a lot of work to that, meeting some DOT specifications. After completion of that work, local DOT staff felt that it was warranted to send this petition for adding to the system to the State Board of Transportation. Prior to sending to the State Board, our Board of Commissioners must agree that this is a good idea to add it to the state system. So I presented you a simple, one-page resolution that DOT provided us in support of adding this to the state system.
Can I drive this road? Because a mountain, Blue Mountain Urology is that, would be using this road primarily...
Right, that's Dr. Steele.
Yeah, Dr. Steele.
And then there's, Aaron Crawford has some other facilities there on the left that are, I think, maybe some nursing home or assisted living type facilities. Dr. Mina has a surgical facility that's located next to Blue Mountain Urology.
Yeah, it's kind of behind Mount Medical on the way to Lake Junaleska Baptist Church. That's kind of back in that area, back there is where this is kind of located, so... Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay, here and then, I will entertain a motion to approve a resolution supporting a petition by landowners to add Spice Wood Drive to the North Carolina DOT system.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Thank you, thank you, Chris. Okay, our fourth item of new business is to, a request of approval of AT&amp;T Switched Ethernet Service Contract for Haywood County Library System in the amount of seventeen-hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-six cents to be paid from budgeted funds. And we have our Assistant Library Director Caroline Rotten here this morning to present that.
Good morning, commissioners.
Thank you.
This morning, we present our AT&amp;T Switched Ethernet Service Contract, which is part of our E-Rate process. For those that aren't familiar with E-Rate, E-Rate is an FCC program that provides internet services at a discounted rate. For Haywood County, we get an eighty percent discount. That discount is decided by the number of children that qualify for free or reduced lunches. So this is just part of that, our process to turn in, to turn in this contract.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Caroline this morning? Okay, here and then, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of AT&amp;T Switched Ethernet Service Contract to Haywood County, for Haywood County Library System in the amount of seven, one-thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and seventy-six cents monthly, or twenty-thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twelve cents yearly to be paid from budgeted funds.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, any other discussion? All those in favor designate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Caroline. Karen, our fifth item of new business is to request approval of appointments of Savannah Clark and Pam Montgomery to the Haywood County Community Child Protection Team and to the Haywood County Child Fatality Prevention Team. And we have Gala back here with us, our HHSA Social Work Division Director.
Good morning again. Yes, as part of both CCPT and CFPT, the Board of County Commissioners can appoint to this. And the changes that we need right now are Pamela Montgomery, she is the Child Welfare Program Manager, as well as Savannah Clark, who is the new Director of Care, which is the Child Advocacy Center here. Julie Schrader left, so we just need those two appointments by you.
Okay. And this, this group basically reviews what you and Lisa talked about this morning.
Absolutely. They would sit on both of those committees and just be part of the community agencies' participation in that group.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Gala? Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments of Savannah Clark and Pam Montgomery to the Haywood County Community Child Protection Team and to the Haywood County Child Fatality Protection Team. Does anyone, someone submit a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the sixth item of new business is to request approval of the appointment of John Schmidt to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments, county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schmidt has been a resident of Haywood County for seventy-four years. He serves as a certified financial planner, cares deeply about his community, therefore he's volunteered to serve on this board.
Okay, any questions for Bryant on that? Can I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of John Schmidt to the Clyde Zoning Board of Adjustments?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the seventh item of new business is to request approval of the appointment of Carol Venus to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Bryant, you're up again.
This is a reappointment from Ms. Venus. She comes highly recommended by Mr. Reeves, who serves as the Omsbudsman for the Adult Care Home for the Southwest Commission.
Can I have a motion to request approval of appointment of Carol Venus to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. The eighth item of business will be to request approval of authority for the county manager or his designated to, in writing, exempt the county from the qualification-based selection procedure for such services under fifty thousand dollars, and approval for Haywood County's QBS procedure changes to General Statute one forty-three dash sixty-four-point-three-one changes. And Bryant, you want to explain all that?
I'll take a stab at it. So, General Statute one forty-three dash sixty-four thirty-one requires the county to post when we're looking for architectural, engineering, surveying services. Lots of times we need these services, but they're small projects, and we also sometimes already have a relationship with an engineering firm that has already worked on the project, but we need them to do more work on the project. So the Statute one forty-three dash sixty-four thirty-two allows the Board of Commissioners to give me the power to exempt from QBS for small projects, they call it under fifty thousand dollars. Now, my authority to sign contracts for the county stops at twenty, this won't change that. This will just allow me to waive the QBS requirement for those projects under fifty. You all will still get the contracts that are over twenty thousand dollars to sign. The one thing, I see this more and more as we're working... The, the one thing I've, I see this more and more as we're working on several economic development projects, we're needing to hire survey or engineers and, and the like, and it's, it's becoming, it slows the process down to go through the steps of QBS. This will just give us a way to knock it out quicker as, as we're working on so many different projects.
Okay, and this, this puts us in line with the state statute, is that correct?
It, it does. And also we have, as, as 1436431 changes, if they change the threshold, our policy will just follow the state's threshold on, on this going forward.
Anyone have any questions for Bryant on this?
So pretty much this is you don't have to come back and ask us to go talk to somebody for that amount. It's just you're not spending anything, you just have to negotiate so you can present something we can spend.
Exactly. And, and we have to, we don't have to post it at, that we're soliciting bids, or not bids, but proposals for this work. It allows us to go out and, and talk one-on-one with the vendor and then negotiate that price for under 50,000. If it's a big project, we still have to follow the, the statute.
Any other questions?
You comfortable doing that, Bryant?
Yes, sir, very much so.
All right.
Okay, any other? Yeah, I'll crest, I will, at this time, request approval of authority for the county manager or his designated to, in writing, exempt the county from the qualification-based selection procedure for such services under $50,000, and approval for Haywood County's QBS procedure to changes as GS 4, 143-64.31 change, as it changes over time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the ninth item of, and final item of old business is to request approval of a $1,000 donation to the Commission, Commission for a Clean County. Bryant, and then of course, Tommy's on that board also.
Yes, at our last meeting, it was brought up to request these funds, and I contacted Ms. Davis, and I think this is just a procedural thing. It's already plugged into our budget on a yearly basis. They get funds from other municipalities and as your, as your packet says, you know, they, they do a lot of good things. Pick up trash, have, have trash pickups once a month and, and help make our county clean.
We just had a luncheon with them.
We did. Ms. Swanson's, you know, she, her heart's in this. I mean, she, she really is all in on, on making our county clean, so really appreciate everything she does.
And, you know, occasionally we get comments about the litter, and I always point them to this group. And if they want to help, like it says, they do pickups from May through September or even into October, I guess weather permitting. So they do, do a good service for the county, and it's all volunteers. And this just kind of helps them with a little bit of funding. I think, I'm sure it helps them with their luncheon and with the, that they have once a year to give the awards, to recognize those in the community that do, do a good job. But if anyone would like to do litter, they could contact the county manager's office and he can put them in, in contact with Commission for a Clean County, or contact Mr. Long, either one, so. Okay, so I'll, is there any other comments? Sorry. Okay, here and then, I'll request approval for the $1,000 donation to the Commission for a Clean County.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that's unanimous. Okay, then we need to go into closed session. Is there any other business, under new business this, this morning that we need to, okay? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for economic development, and that General Statute is 143-318.11A4. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll be in closed session when we enter the chambers in the back. And I don't anticipate any, any decisions. Do you, any, any for the press, so, okay. Thank you. Okay, we're back from our closed session, into, we're back to open session. From our closed session, is there any other business before the commission today? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We're just, we're adjourned.